I call the Berlin School Committee meeting to order. I call the Boylston School Committee meeting to order.
And I call the Berlin-Boylston Regional and Union 6D School Committee to order.
I have to get used to everybody's new voices as they share. Okay, so the first report would be the CPAC and we don't have a presentation, but do you have something?
Yeah, they sent it to me because no one could be here tonight, so there's a couple of announcements. There's the Excellent Educator Awards, the CPAC awards every year, parents nominate educators who have got above and beyond. And this year in BES, they were awarded to Lori Benson, Beth Fletcher, Kristy Lombardo, Janelle Fitzpatrick, and Bill Andrews. And the Tohato recipients were Jake Nolano, Jen McCard, Eve ...
Paul.
Laura Suttle, and Deb Clark. So congratulations to all of them. We didn't unfortunately have anybody from Berlin this year to award them to. They also awarded two graduating seniors with CPAC scholarships, $300. Congratulations to Alexandra Strollevitz of Boylston and Nathan Lavager of Berlin. And in May Superintendent Ekstrom came and did a de-escalation presentation for the parents and that was very well attended and appreciated. I think we'll be having her back again.
I think they like to just hear the stories I tell, that's what it is. Oh, she does this?
CPAC nominations for board positions are open on August 1st and we're hoping that more parents will come, especially Berlin parents. We're trying to get more and more Berlin parents involved. So that's it.
Thanks Karen. And I also, still getting used to that process, I just have to announce that the agenda has been amended from the original agenda that was posted. We originally had Janet Pierce who's going to present tonight, who's from CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. She has asked that we move the results of her testing assessment until August 19th at that school committee meeting in August. So I just have to make that announcement. Also, for my report, a couple of things. First of all, we had a spaghetti dinner that was sponsored by The Grange and that evening we raised 700, like, oh, close to $800 for the gardens, for the community garden project. So that was amazing. It was a great night, it was fun. Carol and I both went, it was a lot of fun. Got to sit with the community members and just, you know, and the kids and it was nice. Also, what you received in your packet was the DDM submittal. You will see that all of these DDMs are extremely extensive. This is what we call our district determined measures. I'm proud to say that in September when we gave the five pilot ones, we were considered the model district back then. So we were supposed to get the results of this in three days after submittal. I submitted on, was it May 27th or 28th? I submitted with a notice saying I'd get information within three days. I have not received any information at this point in time. So they're a little bit backlog, I think. Or they didn't expect to get this many results. So this was a lot of work. I commend my administrative staff, I commend all of the teachers because never in a million years could we, as administrators, sat here and could have thought up what our teachers did for the DDMs. And they worked really hard on it. It was a real authentic process. I'm actually very proud of the process we went through for this. It was a lot, a lot of work, but people really took it seriously and I commend them for that. So you have that in your packets. Building Committee update, we will be meeting on June 19th. All are welcome to sit and listen to our topics of conversation. We did have to repair a sidewalk because it was not ADA compliant. We tried to get a waiver, we were denied the waiver, so they had to fix. It had too much of a ramp, so that had to be repaired. We also have been able to fix our septic tanks, which was a big issue. It sounds like that was so long ago, but the last time we met, I don't think we actually were able to touch base on that. That's actually proven to be successful so far.
Don't say.
I said so far.
Okay.
So far.
You're gonna jinx us.
No. So I won't go any further with that discussion because we don't want to jinx that topic. And also, we hired Lambrian Construction for the facade. So CTA is no longer the general contractor for this facade, it's Lambrian Construction. So the schedule is still stating that the facade will be completed by the end of August and what we mean by that is that's all of the punch list items and everything for the facade. So the facade they're saying will be the beginning of August, two weeks for the punch list items, and then it should be completed and done.
They're actually...
What's the confidence level on that?
We're actually a lot more confident than we were a month ago.
It's actually...
A lot more confident.
Do they have the material and all that?
Yeah, they're actually, they're actually setting up camp tomorrow morning.
Oh, really?
They're bringing their trailer and setting up the staging because the first, in order to get it underway, they're gonna come and do some pre-work before the tile arrives from Spain. So, so far, they have been extremely responsive, so.
It'll be good, it'll be good, all positive. And then also, we're still, although we're still financially ahead of what the project was, I don't want to give an actual amount at this point in time because we're still negotiating and trying to close out a lot of the invoices. And we have general contractor that's saying we owe this amount and we have our OPM saying, no, we're not paying that amount, so we're still negotiating that, closing that net value. So we'll see where we are at that point. The next topic is the Assabit Valley Collaborative Quarterly Report. I don't want to go too much into detail with that. I think it's pretty much self-explanatory, but you can see with the budget meeting was as, and the big piece that we really think about as well is what is the percentage of the increase of the tuition? Because that's the financial impact that we have as a district. And they're looking at a 3% tuition. They were originally looking much higher, but we were able to between, I'm looking at Karen because she's on the board for the special ed department and I'm on the board for the superintendent, so I think all of us kind of talked them down into saying, no, 3% sounds good. So that's where they're at for their tuition costs. And we do have many students that do participate in Assabit Valley collaborative programs, so. And that's it for me, so I'd like to turn it over to Karen.
So I just wanted to give you an update. Every six years, for those of you who don't know, we, this district goes through a coordinated program review, which is special education and English language learners. And our last one was in 2011. So at the three-year mark, they come back and just do a review of special education. So we did that this February. In 2011, we had, depending on the districts, each of the three districts, we had between six and eight standards that were only partially implemented that we needed to improve on and each district had one that was not implemented at all. So I'm very happy to report that we got an absolute clean bill of health. All three districts passed all of the standards this time. And so we're done for another three years.
Thank you Karen. Paul?
And so you also received in your packet a copy of the letter that we received from DECE saying that they have accepted our technology plan, as well as there are other steps, so we have to keep up with the park pieces and there's data that Nick and I have to file often as far as our readiness for park. And so, again, that was approved and we're in good shape. And again, the main, one of the main reasons in it is in this letter is in order for us to continue to receive E-rate reimbursement, we have to have that approved plan, so, again, we're in good shape.
Yeah, that felt good to get that right, Paul. All right, so the business items, the execution of agreement with the Dupre law offices, we just need to announce that we're gonna be executing the contracts effective July 1st. So I actually, I think I had them to sign. I'm sorry?
Does it work to be signed or is it going to change?
It's just the chairs that would need to sign. So we have the signatures for all three, so I'll just pass them around and you'll just This one's for the region, so it starts off with the region as the top one. So I'll just give the signatures on those. And just the chairs need to sign them. The appointment of the superintendent as district representative to the Board of Assabit Valley Collaborative. So each year at this time, you make a, you vote to appoint me as the representative.
Move to appoint Superintendent Ekstrom as the district representative to the Board of Assabit Valley.
And that's on behalf of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School.
On behalf of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School.
I second that.
Okay, are those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have Berlin make the motion as well.
Paul, excuse me. Did you hear a motion from Berlin?
So.
Second.
I second it.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Boylston?
So moved.
So moved.
I shouldn't say this. All of them?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I can't vote two times.
That's okay. The next item is the budget transfers. And so what we do every year is because we don't meet over the summer and you have all the transfers and we're trying to close out, the end of the year closeouts, typically what we do is we do a motion that you would allow the business department to make those appropriated transfers so that we can close out the books. And like Brad had stated, we would, any of those transfer items, we would get, they would email them to you so that you would be aware of those transfers as well. So we would need a motion. We'll start with the Berlin-Boylston.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then for Berlin?
I have a motion from Berlin to approve the budget transfers.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion for Boylston to approve the budget transfers?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next are the hiring allowances. Again, during this time of the year, we don't know typically over the summer if there's move-ins or move-outs or we might have to change a staff or add a staff. Whenever we add a new position, we get that permission from the school committee or increase an FTE of a position, like to get the approval through the school committee. So my recommendation for this at this time is at Boylston, a potential paraprofessional for up to 1.0 FTE, although right now, we are currently thinking that we might need a .4 FTE. Now Paul, don't get excited in thinking that right now that's what we're doing, you're not posting. I'm just saying that for right now, what we're looking at is a potential .4 FTE, but if we see further need, I would like that recommendation to be allowed from Boylston.
So you need that motion from Boylston?
Yeah, from Boylston.
Do you need that to be specific?
Yeah, up to...
Exactly, okay.
Up to a 1.0 FTE on a paraprofessional.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In Berlin, we're looking at, there could be a potential, depending on the classes, maybe an additional paraprofessional for up to a 1.0. We do have 25 students currently in fourth grade, we're comfortable with that at this time, but if we get more students into that grade, we would want to be able to add a paraprofessional support in that classroom. So my recommendation would be if, if we see this as a need, that you would allow us to have an additional 1.0 FTE paraprofessional.
So we're up to what number there? I'm sorry.
We're up to 25 students in the, in the fourth grade and we're comfortable with that. The teacher's comfortable with that as well. But we're just saying, say we get four or five move-ins over the summer and they all happen to be fourth grade, you know, you want to be able to allow an additional support in the classroom.
Not an additional classroom teacher?
No, not necessarily. The teacher's very comfortable with this and there's four sets of twins in the same class.
Four sets of twins?
Four sets of twins. Four sets of twins in fourth grade next year, yes.
Wow, that's in the water.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve a hiring allowance for up to one FTE for a paraprofessional?
So moved.
Second. Great.
Any discussion? Are there those in favor? Sorry.
Aye. Also, at Tohoto, we're looking at a potential to increase a special education coordinator. We've had Deb Clark here as a .6 FTE, however, this year we've also increased the paraprof, in the special education numbers because we had sixth grade move in here this year, but we never really increased that position. So we're looking at, to potentially increase the special ed coordinator from .6 FTE to a 1.0. So that would be a total of a .4 increase in services.
And, I wonder if you, you will have to replace that position?
We need to replace that position. Correct, she's, she's resigned, she's going back to New Zealand with her family.
Is, is that budgeted?
For the, the additional .4 FTE? Well, we have, we have eight different positions, I believe. We've hired three this, I'm wrong, eight. Including Deb, there's eight different positions, so what we've budgeted for, Diane, Karen, and I have been watching the numbers to make sure if we were to do this, you know, where the salary allowances would be.
That you can cover.
We would be able to cover, yep.
So all of these hiring allowances are budget neutral, is that what you're saying?
No, for the Tohoto one, yes. For Boylston and Berlin, again, we'd be looking at if there's any staff changes or where they need to go and always, always looking at the financial aspect of the budget.
Okay, so you need a motion for Tohoto.
Mm-hmm.
I will make the motion as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next is to designate the member of central office to be copied to all school committee emails. Every year, we do this as a new designation. Cheryl Nelson is your, is your keeper of the records, if you will, so we just have to re-vote this policy.
I make a motion that Cheryl Nelson be the designated member to be copied on all school committee emails.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You know what, is that on behalf of the Berlin-Boylston? Sorry, that's a vote, there has to be all three.
Yeah, so that was...
That was...
That was Berlin-Boylston, so let's hear for Berlin then.
I have a motion to appoint Cheryl Nelson to be copied.
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I have a motion for Boylston?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is policy, here we go, this long, JFABAA. This came forward to the school committee last month with a charge for the school committee policy subcommittee, I'm sorry, to review it, to bring it back to the full committee at the next meeting. This is for, what we've revised is that instead of just a senior, but also to have, if anybody has been in attendance at our schools since elementary and family for what have you, they move out, that the student would be allowed to remain for their junior and senior year when it's deemed to be the best interest of the student to do so. So you've received a copy and there was this one red chart and that's the paragraph that we've added.
Can I just ask a question? It says without tuition, does that mean we don't get this $5,000 school choice money from the sending town?
What that means is, no, what that means is that without tuition, that means we're not charging them tuition to attend here.
So the towns, the town that sends a student here still pays us?
That's correct.
Just checking, thanks.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I think we've gotten past the committee.
Okay, good.
Making sure.
Yeah, you know what, Fred, you're right, Diane's right on that, not if you don't have school choice. So if we didn't have a school choice opening, then it wouldn't count as school choice.
Okay.
Because you can't mark them as school choice because you didn't open it.
So what do you call...
They just, they're here, they're here.
Do we get them chapter seven or...
No, you don't get any of that.
Correct.
It's like a, it's a different category, right? Yeah, in the, when you report to the Department of Ed.
I think that's why we talked about the stipulation of having them be in the system from elementary school on, realizing that their family has been taxpayers for a certain number of years and that this is a case-by-case best interest of the student situation.
Right, and sometimes these situations happen and it's not the student's fault and they, who they need the most are the people around them that they've been with their whole life. You know, it's different if they've, you know, started in eighth grade or ninth grade or they just moved here or what have you, but where they've been, that's why we did put it in there, they have to be starting at elementary level.
What is, what do we mean, I guess it's a little gray to me, what do we mean by since elementary? Do they spend one day in elementary school here? Do they spend a full year in elementary? What are we defining by that?
We didn't put a grade level on it because it's elementary school, but I don't know as we get too many people that move in in the last two or three months, you might have like a student.
Well, if there were school choice, you wouldn't accept them.
No.
Minimum of the year.
Right, school choice you don't accept, right, in the middle of the year.
Right, but what we're saying by this is anyone who spent at least one day in our elementary school will be eligible for this.
Gotcha.
Right, if you read by the letter what it says.
So you could change it to had to have completed at least one full year of elementary?
Yeah, I guess, either way, I just want to make sure we're clear that it isn't, it's...
It's a good point, Tom.
We're saying that anyone that was one year from elementary.
So what would the school, would the school committee want to change that or just acknowledge that that's what you're saying?
I get the feeling this is gonna be a very rare appearance.
It is.
So I don't need to change.
Although, don't we have another different situation?
Different situation, that student only started in eighth grade, so that's why we said...
This would mean they've been at least five years in the Berlin-Boylston School District, basically is what we're saying.
Right.
Maybe that's what we should say in the policy.
No, this is fine. It gets to the same thing. So, we need a motion.
Mm-hmm.
And it, because this applies to just the high school, to a motion from the committee.
Well, you know, I was thinking of that, but this is actually not just Tohoto's policy, actually. It doesn't say T on there, it's not just Tohoto. I know, it only pertains to Tohoto. If you want to just do it for the region, you can do it for the region, I don't see why the elementaries have to adopt it.
All right, so I'd like to make the motion to approve the process as, as listed on behalf of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any further discussion on JFABAA? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
All right, so next is the discussion of PARC versus MCAS. And just to give you a little history about this, I really felt it was important to give you a more thorough explanation process. This is a very controversial topic. It was a very controversial topic back when MCAS first started, if those of you who were in education at that time and can remember, there was a lot of protests and going against MCAS and how it's not the right measure and it's not accurate and so forth. The commissioner, Carol and I went to a presentation, the commissioner was there and he was extremely clear that after FY16, there will be no more MCAS, period. It's not gonna be around. He was also very clear in stating to us that even if PARC is not going to be the test, it will be a computerized-based assessment, point blank. He was very clear and adamant to vote to every, all the superintendents that were there and I asked Carol to comment, the curriculum director, as well. So I'm gonna explain to you some of the pros and cons of going MCAS or PARC. This is, this whole process of how to make decisions has really evolved as well, because at first, we were told by MESS, superintendent, she needs to make the decision and then we're saying, but this is policy-based, so really, school committee needs to make a decision. But school committee is not always hearing the full picture, the full story behind all this. So just to give you a little bit more breakdown, we heard Paul saying the response that he got from DEFC is that we have to make sure that we are continuously aligning our technology in preparation for PARC, it's in the writing. All of our Common Core standards based are all PARC geared towards PARC and, you know, people don't like the Common Core, well, it's not going either. That's what we have, that's what we've adopted, we'll have it for at least the next 20 years. So we have to accept the fact that change is going to happen and we are part of that change. And so I'll give you some of my, some of the results and some of the things that DEFC has, has shown us. I'm also going to forewarn you that there is a little bit of humor in here because you have to have a little bit of humor in your change and when we can change this because we don't always like it to. I'm just letting everybody know, some of my administrators have seen it, some have not. So, so again, first, we want to keep in mind that as of 2016, there's no MCAS. Second, if we choose to do PARC, and I have to make my decision by June 30th, the school committee has to make that vote by June 30th, then if we do PARC in FY15, we will be what we call held harmless. And what that means is if we score lower and all the PARC numbers are able to be converted, they gave us a whole chart of how they do the whole conversion between PARC and MCAS. If we do this, what happens is if we score below what we did this, this current year, we can't go any lower, we maintain where we're at.
And that means pertaining to level, right?
To level.
Like a level one or level...
That is correct.
Your, your results still get reported, right?
Results get reported, but when you change your category level, that does not change, okay? Tohoto has just recently, this past year, had gone down to level two. We have Berlin, that's very low in level two, it's borderline level three. And we have Boylston right now, that's level one. So you have to think about, once you go into level three, the Department of Ed starts coming in a lot more aggressively in your school systems. If we do better, we get acknowledged as doing better. So if we do very well, we can change our rating to go up or stay the same, that's what held harmless means for FY15. So we have to really just listen to both sides of the story. You can't just listen to all no because of this, there's a lot of no's out there because of, it's, it's a change and it's a drastic change, there are a lot of no's with MCAS as well. We have to think about how are we gonna prepare our students to be better equipped as we move forward. Some of the basic facts that we, that this, a lot of this comes strictly from the training that Carol and I went through at the Department of Education. So some of the basic facts, in November 2013, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, they endorsed a two-year test drive. That two-year test drive is in, for FY15, okay? PARC was then aligned to the 2010 Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks in English, Language Arts, and in Math. So all of this is part of the Common Core standards. And PARC has also the potential to deliver clearer signals to schools and colleges. They are lining up, what you will see with students is students will then get a rank of 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. So as they are older and they get those threes, fours, and fives, it's helping colleges to understand what, how prepared they truly are for college and where they rank in the college expectations. So this year, what we had was a pilot. We did, there were over 81,000 students in Massachusetts that participated. We had third grade students in both elementary schools and seventh grade students at Tohoto. I've sat with all of the students after the, the testing was done and we had our little ice cream socials. Third graders, of course, they were, they were just so cute, they loved... they loved it, they thought it was great. Um, the seventh grade was up and down because they were used to paper and pencils, so they weren't used to taking a test on the computer, um, which also kind of shows a little bit of a red flag for us, because if in two years we're going to have computer no matter what, how are we preparing our children? And if next year, we're going to be able to be held harmless, then isn't that a great opportunity to be able to give the children those preparatory skills and there's no negative, um, results from them? Also, um, next year, um, they're looking at, um, the, it's the second year of the trio. Now, when I say that there's no more MCAS after 2016, that's all except for 10th grade.
Yeah.
10th grade is until 2018, okay? That's the only grade. So we'll talk a little bit about what we're, what we're looking at, um, for next year. So first of all, it says, why should a district elect to administer PARC instead of MCAS in the spring of 2015? First of all, when you think about the students, the students who participated in PARC will have a head start in experiencing the next-generation assessment system without being, again, without being held harmless. The accountability, districts that choose to administer PARC in the spring of 2015 will have their accountability levels held harmless, and that means their accountability level can only improve or remain the same. Um, it cannot decline from FY14's results. Paper versus online PARC. PARC will provide both paper and online versions of its assessments. It will allow districts choosing to administer PARC the opportunity to select the format that best fits their profile, based on the technology readiness. Paul Mara and I have had numerous conversations, I've had, I just even had a conversation with Diane yesterday, um, as well, in regards to where are we in technology-wise for PARC? We do feel that the towns of Berlins and Boylston both have supported new computers, new computer systems for our, our classrooms. We feel that we also can use iPads, and part of this, um, I talked to Paul about this today, Paul Goodhein as well, that we'll be getting, so that students can actually take the test even on the iPad, and you have the, um, the keyboard, so they will be able to use the keyboards, um, on the iPads. And the way that the PARC is supposed to be set up is more like, you know, like if you have a Kindle and you download your book, and then you don't need a Wi-Fi afterwards because you have the book, the PARC is going to be set up similar in process. So we'll be able to download them into the systems and then upload them when they're done. So we're not going to be eating up all of our Wi-Fi at the same time. So, um, and you can look at the website, um, in Burlington Public Schools and Revere Public Schools, in their pilot, they did an entire school system pilot. And they actually have come to speak to the superintendents about how positive an experience it was, how they were actually, even though, um, how the sessions really worked out, how they were able to use all different, um, tools. They use Chromebooks, we have Chromebooks in Boylston. Um, I believe Link had stated something, I wish John was here, Carol, you were there, I think Link stated something as well about potentially the Chromebooks as well, um, for next year in Berlins, so they might support purchasing some of those. Um, so we were looking at a lot of different, um, options as well. It's not all just going to have to be on the computer, but we can use other utilities. Also, so we feel that paper is not really a requirement at our district, we really feel confident that we'll be able to move forward on the computers.
Just for clarification, today, do you have the devices to make that happen? Or do you have, are you relying on future gifts or donations to make it happen?
Nope. So if we had to do it right now, we could.
Okay.
However, our new purchasing that we're going to be doing over the summer and setting up the elementary schools, because we have that funding already, it's going to make that even that much easier.
But you're not relying on a donation from Link or something else to make this happen?
No, that's not relying, that's just an additional resource that we would have, extra capacity. Um, so no double testing, students will either take PARC or MCAS. Um, and that's true for ELA and Math. PARC is ELA and Math, grades five and eight are, um, still going to take the Science and Technology MCAS. So it's not in addition to, it's just, instead of this one, you're doing that one. That's, that's, so it's not doubled, they're not doing two ELAs, two Maths, they're doing ELA and Math, and PARC and, and MCAS, because the PARC right now is ELA and Math.
Will student, I mean, this year, students are not receiving any results.
Correct, next year they will.
They will.
Yep, yep. This year you didn't because it was a pilot, so they could get a baseline of where the, how they need to restructure their, um, their, um, tests. The tests are very different, um, in that it really is truly in alignment with the Common Core. I think maybe Carol could probably even, I don't know, Carol would want to expand on that a little bit, but about how they're aligned with the Common Core.
I will, if you want to finish.
Sure, sure. Um, so the educator evaluation, PARC will not cause any interruptions in their ability for student growth percentiles, is what they're stating here. Um, so they're saying that the student growth percentile is still calculating in comparison. That is something that I still would want to, um, just investigate that a little bit further. That's the one piece that I, I still have question about. Um, and I know some of the teachers have questions about that as well. So I don't want to state, just because it won't cause interruption, does not mean that we as a district wouldn't want to make a different decision on that. That's still our right, and that's still your right as a school committee and ours as administration as well. So that's, that has nothing to, to me, that shouldn't be a caveat of whether you do PARC or, or MCAS, because that's something we can talk about and with the associations. Training and the, and the, um, timeline. So we start with conference calls, there's been webinars, there's been workshops, there's been conferences, there's been what they called a drive-by with, with the Commissioner. Carol and I have been to a couple of those events actually already. Um, and then, um, and May 19th was actually the one that we went to, it was in Hudson High School. On June 30th is when we have to set, I have to submit what our decision is. Once I submit the decision on June 30th, it's final, it's, it's, it's locked. What happens is, um, if, if we choose, you'll see here, October 1st, choice final day, if, if districts did not make that first deadline, they can submit whatever they want here, they're not going to have an opportunity to make a decision. In other words, they can submit, but they won't be guaranteed. If they decide they're going to do PARC, the Commissioner might deny them and tell them you have to do MCAS. If you do MCAS, you will be held, you will not be held harmless. So if you score lower on your MCAS this year, you're, uh, next year, then you will go, you could drop in those levels. With PARC, it's not, that would happen. Um, July, there'll be a one-day workshop for district administering, um, PARC. That will really mostly be Paul and Nick and possibly Bonnie, and maybe Carol and myself would go to that workshop. We're not quite sure what that entails. We definitely know Paul and Nick and Bonnie would go for sure as the Technology Department, um, because that's about, um, the student information systems and so forth. October 1st, again, that's what I just told you, um, and again, it says pending availability. They don't want more than 50% of the districts, the Commissioner really doesn't want more than 50% of the districts to do it this, this year. Um, but he did say that he'd be willing to reconsider if one district wanted to, to go into the PARC. I will tell you, it is about a 50-50 split. I mean, again, as superintendents, we submit to everybody and see what everybody's doing, and just as you find, just as many of them are staying with MCAS for their own reasons, their, a variety of reasons. Maybe their superintendent's retiring and they don't know what the new superintendent would want to do, and so maybe there's a recommendation of doing that, or, um, you know, there's just a whole variety of reasons for doing it and against doing it. You really have to look at each individual district. Um, in the fall, uh, I mean, in the winter, PARC and MCAS will have trainings. The data uploads, um, will be in the winter for the Department of Education for those districts that are choosing to do it. Um, DEFC is supposed to be assisting the districts. For those that wait the following year, they are basically on their own, they have to do it themselves. Um, and so PARC and MCAS, again, will be administered in the spring. Now, you hear about grades nine and 10, I mean, nine and 11, because PARC goes for grades three to 11. What we would be doing is for this, it's a choice for PARC or MCAS for grades three to eight, okay? Grades on 11 are optional, and I'm saying, no, don't do it. There's no reason to do it, they're optional, it doesn't impact them in any way, so why, why do that when the ninth graders, next year in 10th grade are going to have to do MCAS anyway? Why even bother doing those? Don't do the additional testing. Um, what will happen is, the high school, what we're recommending is that the high school level stays as is. They do 10th grade MCAS, that's what they'd have to do anyway. And we currently have any ninth graders that finish their biology class in ninth grade, take the 10th grade Biology MCAS in ninth grade. So that way, they're, it's fresh and they're mine, they've just finished taking the course, and that's what they've done. And that's what practice that you've done here. So we wouldn't change anything about the high school.
Do you have any concerns that if, if a student's in eighth grade and they're taking PARC, and then in 10th grade, they're going to return to MCAS, that they've somehow lost out on practice?
No, because it's all, it's all going to be Common Core, that's what the whole thing is going to be. But the, the 10th grade MCAS is going to be changing significantly next year regardless, but it's still MCAS, it's still paper and pencil. So no, I don't see negative impact to that at all.
That's really good.
I key it, it's a template. Um, okay, so the choice of PARC or MCAS, districts, again, will choose for grades three through eight. Um, nine and 10, I'm saying, no. 10th grade is an automatic, MCAS will be required. Student participations, um, so again, that's supposed to be three to eight, that's why I stopped. I get a typo there, so I'm sorry. It's supposed to say all students grades three to eight, um, and nine and 11 are selected to participate, will take the completed PARC tests in both ELA and Math, so that was, that was incorrect. The test format, so districts participating in PARC will have the opportunity to select whether students will take the online versions, we're recommending the online versions. Um, because like I said, after 2016, they're doing a next-generation online assessment anyway, so you're giving them two years of full practice and, and preparation for it. The district school and student level results will be produced and publicly reported, and the student roster, which is no different than anything else, so that's not a change. It's just saying they're going to keep with the, the status quo. The department will upload all students enrolled as of the October 2014 Sims reporting, which is our student reporting, our October 1 reporting. Those students will be in there. So any others that change after the October 1 enrollment, we would have to tweak and, and change before the testing. Um, technology, again, there's, um, they just really talk about what our, our technology requirements would be, and working with Paul, we feel that, I have to tell you, the pilot we did, Paul Goodhein even said, it went off really smoothly and running, and I think, um, Paul and Nick did a fabulous job making sure everything was, was well-prepared. Well, accountability reporting be different, yes, but only for schools that administer PARC. Would that mean that schools administering PARC will have their accountability and assessment levels held harmless? And so their meaning, their, their levels will only stay the same or go up, they cannot decline. Um, and then the MCAS, you'll be classified into a level as usual, and you will not be held harmless. So we could, I do worry with Berlins, I don't want to see, um, that happen, um, honestly, and I, I also don't want to see our Boylston go down from level, to level one. And Tohonto, still having a lot of work with their curriculum alignment and reporting, I'm just, I just don't want to see that decline either. So will data be reported to the school that chooses PARC? Yes, um, they're planning on reporting it, just like everybody else. Um, and so there's a link, they called it the equipercentile linking, is what they called it, and it's actually basically saying they're going to convert the PARC results to the MCAS results, so there'll be a, a common link. This is an example of, of why. It says here that Commissioner Chester has pledged that any school participating in the spring, um, will be able to do so without concern, that its PARC participation may adversely impact its accountability level, and these are some hypotheticals. So if you were to look at school A, and you see here that they, um, in 2014, they were a level one, this was their percentile, um, and then in 2015, it dropped, it would be a level two. But if they were in the held harmless, they would remain at level one. And the same is true with school B, declines here to level three, here it remains in level two, and here, it all stays, so it improves, and then it improves. Okay?
What's the theory of that? Like, what's the rationale? Why?
Why is he doing that? Uh, because it's, it's changed, and it's really hard, and so we need to start moving in this direction. I know there's been concern about even whether or not PARC is even going to be held, um, you know, continue. He's on the executive board of PARC, and he's our commissioner, so I don't see us going away from PARC. All our Common Core standards are, are PARC alignment, the request from the Department of Ed is telling us, make sure you're aligning with PARC. Every demand we're getting is PARC, PARC, PARC. So, um, it's happening, it's, it's inevitable, change is going to happen, and I think this just gives districts a little bit more comfort level of making that leave and making that change happen. But listening to Burlington Public School Superintendent and Revere Public School Superintendent, and their positive, I mean, they did full school, and their positive comments on the outcomes of it, um, I mean, they don't have the results, but just the feedback and so forth were just so positive, um, that I think even listening to our own, our own colleagues going in that direction, I think made, has made a difference too. Angela?
I can add a question or comment about that, in that, um, I think we've heard before in the past, over the year or so, that PARC will bring scores down for everyone, and so it'll be interesting to find out what the results were in these two communities, if that actually happened. So I think what this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the held harmless not only makes you more comfortable in doing this, knowing that a new test, new standards, you're likely going to score, or potentially score lower. Um, my question then is, so say someone does MCAS, and then the next year, 2016, and everyone does PARC, they have to have that year to get acclimated to the test, and their scores are going to go down, and they are going to be held accountable.
Yep.
Whereas if a district chooses PARC for next spring, they've had that, kind of used to trial fun, and in the next year, their scores will be accountable, and it will be based on their previous scores and likely to go up, I would imagine.
Correct, because they get more comfortable, more practice they have, they're more comfortable there with it. Also, don't forget, we have in our elementary literacy programs, we have just adopted the new, um, Wonders reading program, which is all aligned with PARC, so this is also going to be a safe way of assessing of how well we're aligning our elementary literacy programs that I'm best investing in, and the curriculum alignment that they're working on, that Carol at the end of June, beginning of July, and, and in development, and how much this is going to really, how much, I, I, I know, I'm just positive, but I know that every time there's a change, there's adapt, but I can just only see great outcomes out of it. Like, I can just envision the great change that can happen, the positive that can happen out of this, um, just because of all the, the work and efforts that our teachers are putting into play, especially at the elementary school with the literacy programming, so. Again, a little humor. I can't forget.
Looks like you have no hair, Paul.
You like that comment?
So, Eric's always asking, what about special education? So, I said, here, I'm going to put that, she's like, what am I saying? I'm like, what about education to the other term? Um, so there is an MCAS, is an alternate assessment, and that gets completed for those children with significant disabilities that can't take the typical MCAS. So, um, what they have done is, they are actually going to continue with the MCAS alternate assessment, but it's going to be PARC-related in regards to the standards. So that's their adapted, because PARC is a national test, and MCAS is a state test. So the state has gone higher than the federal requirement of special needs and accommodating, so the state is going to continue with that, um, expectation of the alternate, until they come up with what they call an alternate PARC, which I forget what the name was that they used at the conference, I can't remember, but they had another name for it, but it's like an MCAS alt, but this is what they'll, they'll be using. We have probably, what, five alts?
Oh, alts? This year, one.
Oh, there you go. We've got one student in the entire, um, so it's not a common assessment. I don't want to, I think there's like 30 kids that are doing it, just one, so. And, we've got the tiny kids. And...
I didn't give my permission for my photo. I didn't sign a waiver for that.
You did, when you signed on. So life gives us opportunities for growth, disguised as challenging circumstances. And I think that's really what we're facing.
That is, our wish was very prolific.
So at this point, I would like to just open it up to the school committee about some discussions that you have. I am strongly recommending it, and I think Carol, if you want to add a point?
I just want to say a few things. One of those dinosaurs has been around long enough to remember when we first had MCAS. And I was a teacher in the string MCAS, and everybody was in a panic about that. Oh, my gosh, this is... And so now, like, 20 years later, and now PARK has come along. And it's really state-of-the-art assessment for students, and the students are very comfortable with it. Because we watched, as Nadine mentioned, the students online with this test. We were wringing our hands, and they were on that. They were done in no time. It's their life. It's their generation. They're very, very comfortable with the technology. So as long as we have it in place for them, which we do, we're fortunate, more than some other districts. And that's been the biggest concern for districts that are hesitant about this, is they don't have the infrastructure in place to take the test online. They'll have to do paper and pencil. But we have that, so I would say, go for it that way. The other piece of it, for teachers, we get the results back faster. We get that data. We can use that to perform instruction in a way. MCAS, we wouldn't get to look at the data until October. So it was, we're looking at last year's data in such an untimely fashion. It was almost like, well, we can kind of think about what we want to do for this year. So that's another issue. I think that it also gives us a chance to look across the country, looking at where we are against other states, other communities, in a way we haven't had a chance to do before because the playing field is leveled in terms of anybody, anybody who's in different states who's administering PARK. I think that's a good way to look nationally as well. And as far as the Common Core standards, this is a rigorous test. It really speaks to the Common Core standards and everything that the students are learning now to prepare them for their world. It's very much about critical thinking, synthesizing information, closely reading text information for comprehension. That's what the Common Core is about, and that's huge for our students to be able to adapt to any kind of information that they're reading. I watched students take a persuasive, or to create a persuasive essay, which is about writing standards, persuasive expository narrative pieces. They had to write, they were given several pieces of text, and one was even video that they had to watch. In that time period, they had to synthesize the information from all those different areas and write a persuasive essay. Another student had to write a newsletter. Another person had to write a newspaper article based on the information they had gathered. So it was fascinating. It was rigorous. It was engaging for the students, and it's where they are at right now. And I think, I mean, we have a choice here, but it's hard to really imagine that there is a choice. I mean, if our choice is to stand still, we're going to probably get lost as the wave continues to move forward. They really want us to be at the forefront of this, rather than tailing behind and trying to catch up with the run. And I think useful to that, Angela, about that we get this opportunity to kind of have a year to get on board. That's not going to necessarily be so with some of these other districts, and they're going to be tapping. We did that with the evaluations. We've done that. We're in a place right now with the district where we're, as a school system, where we're finally saying, we're up front.
Carol started years ago going to some of the curriculum meetings, and she kind of didn't want to leave, because they hadn't done it yet. And now she's doing this because we're the only district that has, and the others don't know what she's talking about.
I called her from all those different places. You go, oh, we're right on target. We're right on... It's a great feeling, and it's so important. It confirms that we're on the right track with the work that we're doing here. Is it hard? It's going to be hard. This change is hard. The Common Core standards and getting teachers and student teachers to look at the standards and teach from the standards in their classroom is challenging. They're starting to look at that now and say, oh, we're making those adjustments to what we're teaching. It's just the way of education. And like I said, 10 years from now, we'll be like, oh, yeah, PARK. Sort of like we said at MCAS after 10 years. It's just that it's new, and new is scary.
Any other administrators want to add anything to that?
I think what's different and what's hard, honestly, is the whole politicizing of the issue. I personally am frustrated by that, because I feel like it's created messaging that doesn't give you the opportunity to really ask thoughtful questions and understand the whole picture. And truthfully, I don't like getting emails from other community, school committee people suggesting that we're irresponsible if we choose one decision or the other. I found that offensive, honestly. I understand this is not perfect, and, you know, I have some concerns about some of that equipercentage stuff. I really question how well they're going to crosswalk those two vehicles. That doesn't sound like it may work really well.
It was interesting when Carol and I looked at it, because they gave us this chart, and we were actually like seeing how it would actually work. And what we see is that with the PARK, the expectations are higher, however, the range is wider as well. And that's how they convert the PARK chart. Remember that? You have a wider range of that proficient than what we have for proficient.
So just to finish, my comment is that I think we're doing students a disservice if we do not set a path that is consistent with the standards that have been set and be able to proceed along that path in a sort of straight-line way. It worries me. I find it troubling to think that there is a big movement around Common Core and around PARK, and is it possible that the state is going to reverse direction in some way? It is possible. Is that the best thing for the kids? I don't feel it is, because I feel like we worked, put so much effort into moving in a particular direction, and it's not perfect. I agree, it's not perfect. MCAS isn't perfect either.
It's been going for 17 years, and it's still not perfect.
But my own personal feeling is, we need to stay the course and move ahead with a structure that follows the Common Core. And I would be in favor of us doing PARK, so.
Question, we talked a lot about, heard a lot about, about holding the district harmless in the change. What about the individual student?
So it's not a graduation requirement, except for in 10th grade. And so it's not going to hold the student harmless, harmful in any way, because we're going to actually be able to see by standard where the students actually are in alignment. If anything, it's going to help us to have a better, a clearer understanding of where each child is individually, and being able to move forward in regards to the standards of growth. Because if you remember, our elementary report cards, we went from achievement to growth, and this is hitting more on that, where they are in that, in each standard specific.
So do you see anything tied to these results that could adversely impact the individual?
I don't.
Any programs, or, I don't know if there's scholarships, or anything that would be kind of tied to these types of results?
No, all the scholarships would be more on the academic base, other than, they do the Abigail and Adams Scholarship for the MCAS, but that's staying, like I said, until 2018 anymore. So I don't see anything negatively impacting our children, if anything. And I see this as a positive impact, because we're preparing the students for that next generation, and we're not being held harmless while we do it. The other thing I didn't mention too, is the commissioner did mention, Carol, help me if I say this inaccurately, from my memory, the conference that we went to, the commissioner did say that they're also having more funding for technology, funding coming out, but it's going to be first come, first served kind of thing. And those districts that choose PARK would be the first ones opted into that pool. Is that correct, Carol?
That's correct.
But that's going to be based on need. We don't demonstrate any need.
Right. Well, if he didn't see that...
There's a grant, I'm still going.
She's still going at it. Don't tell Carol no on a grant, that's for sure. She'll call you up and find out why. But yeah, he had stated that it would be more on, you know, those districts that did it. So I know that there's a lot of little carrots that are outside carrots. It's not student-specific. So when I'm talking about student-specific, I see this in preparing them. It's also helping the teachers to get the feedback right away, and that they're able to make any adjustments that they need to make in their classrooms or their instruction.
He could throw some Chapter 70 money our way.
Hey, I love that.
Is there anything that concerns you about it?
Yep. What concerns me about it more than anything is the political aspect. I don't honestly like being a superintendent that's in the middle of political controversy, especially under these types of considerations. So really, what I hope is if we vote to go forward with this tonight, that I also continue to get the support from the school committee and these decisions that have been made. And I'll support you, and vice versa. But, you know, I have to say that in the community, it's a 50-50. Across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's probably about a 50-50. But I would also say probably even among the staff, it could be a 50-50 of what they understand about this process too. So, you know, nobody's excluded from their opinion on this, but whenever there's change, you always have some that are for it and some that are against it, and for a variety of reasons. So I don't think this change, whether it's PARK or MCAS, whichever decision's made, you're going to make 50-50 happy, one way or the other way.
If we see maybe a 50%, say, of our teachers not there, what are we, do you see us doing?
I threw that out there, but honestly, upon this, you know, discussion here, there will be much more discussion with the teachers, more in more in specific, smaller groups and so forth, discussions about this particular assessment going forward. It's just the timelines are just unbelievable with what, I mean, May 19th, and then I say June 30th, and then I have one meeting. I mean, you've got to talk to school committee before I start talking to everybody else about all of this, and the timelines are just awful with the Department of Ed. I think they think teachers work in their office, you know?
I think one of the elements of this that make it worse too, makes it worse, is that people who are on the fence or don't have a strong opinion may make the decision, let's not do it, because there's all that controversy, and it's just going to change. So why should we go through this change, only to have that not be the end result? I could see people making those...
And that's what happens in a lot of things that happen, and that's controversial, right? Things that you vote or you hear and what have you. So no, I agree. And I guess when you say, what are you concerned? Those are the kind of things that I truly am, honestly.
Maybe no one can answer this question, so I don't want to put anyone on the spot. But the one thing you sent us, not your presentation, but the other one that I think you went to on the 19th, it basically said, you know, after 2016, it's going to be the PARK or some other next generation type of test. And several months ago on the news, I heard that there were two tests in the nation that test the new Common Core state standards. One of them was the PARK. They didn't mention the other one. So I was just wondering, are there other states that are piloting and testing another type of assessment for the Common Core that's...
So what I'm aware of, and I honestly, you know, I'll take that unless you... But I know that the PARK, originally, there were 23 states that were with PARK. Right now, there's nine states. Don't ask me which ones, because I, yeah, I hear a different story, that are definitely doing for next year. Whether they're not going to do it in two years from now, I think they're backing out for next year. We need to see the results, and then they'll jump on board. That's what I think is going to happen. If not, they're going to end up having to jump on board with PARK or whatever. You know, you also hear that there's controversy because whether the commissioner is on the executive board, that's all fine. I mean, if anything, if this is the direction that we're moving, and this is where we're headed, and our commissioner is on the executive board, well, it's kind of a win-win for us, because he knows our expectations. He knows what should be in that assessment, and he's a part of it. So, you know, again, you can see positive and negative, and both sides of that, but we're going through a change, and I think if we just continue to go systemically in that direction, maybe it's the right decision for our students.
Do you have an understanding of what the reasoning is for only wanting 50% to participate?
I think, honestly, I think he did say that he'd be willing to consider going higher if there were more. I think he just started off with that number at the beginning, to be honest. I don't think he really thought he was going to get 50%. And then more and more people were getting more interested in it and saying, well, yeah, let's do it, let's do it. I know that a superintendent had to make the decision right then and there, it would probably be a lot higher percentage than what probably will come out. And again, that's just in my head only. But just from what I've heard from any superintendents and some of the struggles that they're having in trying to make these decisions, it's become such a short timeframe that we have to make the decision. There's not enough time to really educate. And that's why tonight, I really wanted to try to explain this as much as I could, because this was the turning point. I have to tell you, originally, I was not PARK. Originally, I was not. And then when I started going to webinars, watching webinars, and I started listening to the conferences, and I do my own research and study on this, and everything you turn on is through PARK, I said to Carol, that May 19th was my turning point, just listening and hearing all of these things. I'm like, what's the negative? And we start raising, what's the negative on that? Or, you know, what would be harmful for that? What's the positism? The positives outweigh the negatives for us. But I think that he wanted 50%. I think he didn't think, honestly, he was going to get it. Again, that's my own assumption. And then when he started to see all the interest, he's like, well, by June 30th, they'll be guaranteed. Anybody after that, you know, we have to see. I think he's also looking at his own capacity within his office. I think that's the other piece, because you have to build that capacity. So I think that's part of what, that would be, I would think, part of his consideration. Again, he didn't say anything, that's my own assumption on that.
And we talked about college readiness. Do you foresee them reporting this to colleges at some point? Is that like a goal, or a... Yeah? I would say that, for me, that's a negative.
Well, I'm going to say that I believe it is. When they started talking about that a little bit more intense, the commissioner kind of stopped the conversation, because I don't think he wanted to get there yet. But if I were to look in a glass ball, and I'll put a bold statement out there, is I think that it's going to become more this than college and career readiness, probably USATs and things like that. Again, my head only. Ken, my head only. But, you know, I'm not saying that that's what it is, but I'm... And the reason why I say that is, this whole idea reminds Carol and I both of Finland, and what we saw happening in Finland. Going to Finland was such an eye-opener for us, that everything that we've seen happen this year, we can rationalize it, because we saw some of these things happening in Finland or in Germany. This is where these ideas are coming from.
My concern are just, I just hope that they really are looking at what colleges are doing, and, you know, they know what they're looking for, as opposed to just thinking they know what they're looking for.
I do know that DESI and Higher Education, they're talking more and more together. Years ago, that wasn't probably so much the case. But we're seeing a lot more, even at our conferences and so forth. We've got Higher Education as a part of those meetings and some of the conferences. So we're starting to see a lot more of that linkage, which is huge.
That would be good.
Yeah, it's huge. Carol?
If I could just add one more piece, something I had mentioned earlier about the staff and their feelings. The piece to always remember here is that when we're working with staff on instruction, it's really... it's really around the Common Core standards, around the mass frameworks. It's not around the test, the testing tool. This is a tool that we're doing to get information, see assessment. But we always want to remember we're not teaching to this, whatever test, we're teaching to these standards. And that's the heart of the teaching piece of this for the teachers. That's, that's the focus of our work. It's been since we came out with the Common Core standards. And that's where the emphasis with the teaching staff, I really want to commit, and we are committing that time to getting up to speed and understanding that we have the next generation science standards and then what Massachusetts is adopting for their standards coming into play. We're going to have to really look at that next and focus because that's where the real learning comes from, is the standards. This is just, this is, I'm going to say just, but it's the tool, what the real learning is, is the standards.
So what could I like to?
The health harmless part? Is that not just achievement, but it's also growth, right? And eventually, don't you hit a spot where it's pretty hard to grow when you're near the top?
So that's actually, I'm going to tell you that that's more like 2012, 2011 and earlier. Since 2012, the growth is on your own student growth percentile. So say you and I, give you an example. Say you and I took a test, okay, in eighth grade, and we were in the same range.
Right.
The following year, when we take a test, I'm going to be scored against my equal colleagues, you and I, right? So everybody that was in this range with me, we have a score. So next year, I'm going to be compared with those that grew. So did I grow more than you or grow less than you within my cohort? And then the next year, now I'm in a different cohort. So then the following year, am I growing more than that cohort? Am I the average of that cohort? So it's not about, I scored a 98 percentile and so I have 2% to grow. That was 2012 and before, okay? Since 2012, the student growth percentile, the whole equivalent calculation has completely changed because that is the issue. It was too hard to show the growth, it was too hard to show the change. And that was part of the things that if we're, if we're scoring, if we're evaluating teachers on growth, you can't combine growth and achievement. And that's what was happening for 15 years. It's the last two years, but that's where it's changed.
Because I think that's why Boylston may have slipped to a level two a couple of years ago and then bounced back.
So, Tohonto, oh, Boylston?
Yeah, Boylston.
Right, that could very well have been. But now their growth is on their child, their children's individual scores and what their average growth was based on the cohort of where they were. And this whole thing, I had to go, I'm not kidding you, it was so complex on the change because we're all set in this whole achievement growth that I probably went to four or five seminars just to learn, to get a grasp. And every time I went, I learned something different on it. So it is about the actual individual student and where they're at.
And then the other question I have is, I thought I saw an email go around, you're right, there's tons of emails floating around. Is there more testing time required for the Park than the MCAS?
Great question. So with the Park, what you have is it's more, it looks like there's more days, but it's shorter sessions that are allowed. So MCAS, you might take a test, you might have one full day on long comp, right? Long composition. In the Park, you have a certain timeframe and that's it. And obviously, those with special needs, they have the extended timeframe. So it's not a full day. So you also have it where the testing is done, I thought I had kept it in there on the testing dates, but I'm going to take it off. Testing dates are done, like you'll see, there'll be like a March is more what they call a PBA, which is your performance-based assessment. And then they'll have another test later on in the year. So there's a gap in between those two assessments. So it might be three sessions, but they might be three 90-minute sessions and they're done. Where previously, they might have had one session, but it was an all-day session.
So what will happen for the other half of the day for the kids who take Park that day? Will there be a half day?
So I suggested to Diane even just yesterday, and also be giving it to Paul and John, Inzet Burlington and Revere actually posted their schedule and how they were able to do it, which was amazing. And it was actually the technology director and the superintendent and the principals that worked on that schedule, and it was flawless. So I said, I highly recommend that they take that as an idea, as a model, and how they could make it work into their own system. But what's great is that it's, once the time is done, it's done. So it's not like, you know, you can be quiet in this hallway because you're testing or quiet that's like a whole day, you know, it's just, it's an hour and a half.
I almost wouldn't want to, I don't think we should have this discussion now, but one of the points that Brett's, I think, making or asking about is something that would be helpful for the school committee to kind of see the whole picture. Because we've added AmesWeb and other assessments too. And I think that certainly the perception, and I don't know if I really know the reality, is that we're doing a ton of assessment and it's a lot of time out of.
And it's funny that you mention that because Carol and I worked today on our calendar for all of our admin meetings and our committee meetings and everything else. We have one master calendar for that. And then we had talked about doing the testing so that we can have that calendar too. So it took me all day to, Carol and I almost all day to do our master calendar for the admin, but then that's the next step that we'll do. So I'd be more than happy to give it to all of you to see the comparison.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we have a motion?
I move that we proceed with Park testing for 2015.
On behalf of which?
On behalf of the, what district would you like me to? Okay, on behalf of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District.
A second then.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to be opposed.
So for the Berlin School Committee, do I have a motion to accept doing Park in spring of 2015?
So moved.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make the motion for Boylston Elementary to do Park for next year.
Second. I'm not supposed to, sorry.
We're getting murdered. You can take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll oppose.
Oh, thank you very much. And now that we voted on that, I will notify all of the staff about the decision and I'll also give them more of the information and the update. So thank you very much. Next is the appointment of subcommittees and task forces. Actually, I'm going to just talk about that. A task force is not as different than a subcommittee. And what that means is that the superintendent can have a task force and ask for members of the school committee to be present, but it doesn't mean that it's a subcommittee of the full committee. So we would do a, for Berlin, we need a school committee member to approve payroll.
I can do that. I tend to be around if you like and then someone else.
Okay, so you don't need a motion, you can just appoint yourself as the chair?
I appoint myself.
Okay.
That's pretty good.
In Boylston, we need a payroll.
I was going to say I'm right down the street unless either of you guys want to.
I vote to appoint Brett.
Thanks.
Can I do that?
You can just appoint.
I appoint.
Also, we will be needing a personnel subcommittee member because the negotiations will begin for the contracts in this upcoming year in Boylston. So we'll need a.
No, we're just looking at you in case you really want to do it. If you don't, you don't.
I mean, I can, I just did it last time and so I have about to share.
I was going to say Laurie.
Okay. I appoint myself.
Okay.
It's my turn.
Yep.
Okay, and then the region, Union 60, we need a subcommittee for payroll and payable warrants.
Angela and I.
That's the rule on that is it has to be three because it's regional.
No, you've always had two. You've had one, one Berlin and one Boylston member. Like you and Angela have been the subcommittees.
Well, that's under policy. You're talking about payroll.
Oh, you're right, it is three. I apologize because it's payroll. That's different.
Well, you got two, Angela and I. Somebody else draw, straw.
I'm not going to draw any straw.
I'm not going to do it either.
I just really. Can it be one of three of us? I mean, could it be you two and then you search for one of the rest of the four of us to see who's available? I just hate to commit to it all the time. I don't know if that works, no?
Is this for the summer? Is that what this is?
This is just the summer?
Well, it's the whole, it's the school year, but you know, should something happen, we need a meeting. But the majority is the summer, we need things signed.
Right, because we usually sign them here in meetings.
Who is consistently around?
Not you, like me, you're in Ireland all the time.
I'm a volunteer.
I probably will be around. I can try. Can, no, like let's say I couldn't do it, could we pull the rest of the members to do it if I was not available? All right.
Well, what we would do is we'd have to just get everybody else's signature. Everybody else's?
You'd have to get everyone else's?
Yeah.
Actually, you, you don't have to have four legally. So if you weren't around, there'd have to be four people who could.
I can make every attempt to do that.
Thanks, this is a, definitely blacked one here.
I'll go ahead and do that.
You'll do it with? And who else?
Brad and Angela.
Brad and Angela?
First two. Who was that third one that was?
Yeah, because they were already doing it for the other two. All right, so Brad, you're appointing those three members?
Yes.
Policy Subcommittee, we've had Angela and Larry this past year.
Actually, we have my contingent.
I wanted Tom to be on the task force for budget planning, so I don't want to overload him if he's willing to be on the task force. So I'm willing to be on the Policy Subcommittee again as well, unless we're.
Okay.
It's really a burning desire.
I don't want to.
So on this task force, if there is a quorum of school committee members, even though it's a, it's a superintendent's task force, as you interpret it, you look immediately.
So if there's a quorum, there would be more than half of the people. So I want one Boylston member and one Berlin member.
Cool.
So you wouldn't have more than half of the committee. But I would like to just ask a Boylston member and a Berlin member. And the purpose of this task force is I want to reach out to the finance committees in both towns and the select boards in both towns, and possibly the treasurer of both towns as well, to see if they could, you know, one member from each committee to just meet with us periodically to talk about the budget, where we stand, where the concerns are, just as an outreach so that we're all working together and having a common understanding. So I know with Tom, I know you've expressed interest. I would love to have you if you're interested in doing that.
Yeah, Brett.
Yes, considering.
It's the one thing I like.
Okay.
Brad and Tom.
And Brad, you'll do it too?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much. So I'll keep you informed of when I'll have the initial task force meeting, but I'm going to first send out the letter to all parties to invite them.
For the Boylston, Brett?
Yeah.
Yep.
And could I just get Angela to sign the Policy Subcommittee? Was it Lauren or was it Brett?
I think Larry.
That I wanted to continue.
Yeah, that worked out well. Next is the school committee meeting dates. I gave you the suggestion of those dates. And just some of the changes that I made from this year, this current year to this upcoming year. I'd like to just explain. The school committee meetings, what we're finding is that as we're moving along throughout the year, your individual municipal meetings are really shorter because the majority of what's happening is at the tri-meetings than at the regular meetings. So what I'm recommending is that the Berlin School Committee and the Boylston School Committee meetings start at 6:00, with the tri starting at 6:30, and then the region not starting until 7:00. So you still, rather than, you know, it going till 7:00 and 7:15, you need more than 15 minutes. But obviously, these change if we see the meetings going. But just as a general rule of thumb, that was a recommendation. The other one was if you look at March, what we did was we have, you know, your regular meetings. Then we, based on the feedback, is we're recommending the budget hearing that same week, that last week of March, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So it's all one week for the budget hearings. And then the following week would be the tri-meeting, where you would all just do your vote on the recommended budget the following week. So that was another.
That's a good point.
Because they usually need the final vote. What we're finding is that first week, or that Tuesday, that first week of April, because a lot of the information goes into print. And then we would keep the December meetings to be your own. So you have December 2nd, 9th, and 16th. And then the February meetings, your own, February 3rd, 10th, and 24th. So those are my recommendations.
Just to raise a comment on this, and I'm not involved again, but I'm not going to be able to attend meetings starting at 6:00 coming forward. My work schedule has changed. I can do 6:30, can't do 6:00 anymore.
You can do 6:30?
You can do 6:30?
I can.
So then.
So, yes, so if there is a, on the dates, if there's a Boylston meeting with.
A tri.
The tri and the region, that might impact that, but I don't think it would affect any of the others. Because all the other region units would start. If it's just the region, that's not impacted. If it starts with a tri, it's not impacted.
Okay. So then what we can do is we'll just kind of alternate when the Boylston committee meetings are. They'll start at 6:30, the tri will start at 7:00, and the region will start at 7:30. But when we have Berlin meetings, they'll start at 6:00, 6:30, and 7:00.
That starts to get really dicey for people to kind of keep track of.
When we post, we post the times right at the top of each meeting.
I'm sorry, this is a work thing I have no control over.
One thing I noticed this year is that the tri-meetings tended to go a lot longer than the time was allotted for. I don't know if you want to go through it another year and see if that's consistent, but I did like how you did it tonight with the region first. Since it was a shorter meeting in the tri, I know it was going to be so long later. It was just something I noticed.
Yeah, I think we're still feeling that. So if you want to switch and do the region at 6:30.
Diane likes that idea.
I know Diane likes.
I'd say sorry if I had to. It does make for a very long day.
So is there a downside of?
Swapping them?
Swapping?
No.
Is that going to impact anything? Because we're all here for the region and the tri anyway.
Right.
Doesn't bother me at all.
So we swap them.
Okay.
That way your student member doesn't have to wait around.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
I feel very bad about that this year.
Yep, and your CPAC, I mean, your CPAC will end up having to stay. But your PT. But your PTO and your student.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
So I am still a little confused about Boylston School Committee.
So Boylston School Committees will start at 6:30.
Okay, but if it's the same date as a tri, like October 7?
Yep, so then the tri will start at, the, the region will start at seven, and the tri will start at 7:30.
Okay, okay.
What I would, I would think will happen, as has happened this year, is that our Boylston meetings really haven't been lengthy.
Right.
And so to the opportunity to even post that for only 15 minutes, I don't think so, it's not having as big an impact.
I was going to say, it looks like on November 4th, there's going to be like a tri meeting and a regional. Would it be possible to do that on November 18th instead?
Say that again?
November 4th, there's a tri meeting and a regional. Would it be possible to do the tri meeting on November 18th instead? I just have a conflict on November 4th.
Wow, you're going to have to send us a new schedule.
I am. I'm taking all your feedback.
I'm not going to be able to attend the Berlin School Committee on October 21st. For their regional. That's a big deal.
So is that, if it's an issue for the committee, we'll look for another date?
If it's, if it's not an issue for the committee, I won't change it if anybody doesn't know of a problem. I also have a problem with November 18th.
Oh, that's a big one.
But that, that we might not have that meeting.
Right, we don't always have that regional meeting anyway. But if you're switching the tri to the 18th?
Yeah, if you're going to switch the tri to the 18th.
Then I can't do it.
What's the middle of the number? You guys want to go? Yeah, it's Veterans Day.
Actually, the 18th of November, that's the date you're talking about?
Yep.
Could I just, actually just interrupt this conversation for one minute? I just, I feel bad because I know Paul's been waiting because he has one thing that he wants to say. And I just dawned on me that the poor guys were sitting here.
What was that?
Because he forgot to say something at Boylston, so I apologize, Paul. So if you just want to say...
Yeah, remember now. Oh, yeah. Fifth grade recognition ceremony is on Tuesday at 12:30 for our fifth graders. And I wanted to acknowledge that Brad had an end of year chess tournament, Final Four, for his volunteer chess club this year. It was Jake.
Yep.
Jake Rose was the final champion of the chess club tournament, so very thankful and happy that you conducted that again this year. The kids really enjoyed it.
Congrats to Jake, great kid. He worked hard. You're in it.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there.
And if the administration team wants to leave, go right ahead. You don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting. That's how quickly they get up. Okay, so can we just start first?
You could say that sooner next time.
I, I know, I purposely didn't. I saw you mention. I'm just kidding. Tom, you said October, does it work for you?
October 21st, I wasn't able to attend the meeting.
Okay.
And November 18th.
Alright, so let's start first with the October 21st meeting. Would we want to switch Boylston and Berlin's dates on that? Is Boylston okay? Oh, we're still going to do the tri though. Oh, no, the tri's on the 7th. We can still keep the tri the 7th, but just switch your meetings.
It's about October 28th.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So Berlin's will be October 7th, and Boylston's will be October 21st. Now let's look at the November 18th issue. Good night, Paul.
Good night.
So someone had a conflict with the 4th.
Yeah, I had a conflict with the 4th.
Fourth is Election Day, right?
That's right.
Oh, jeez! Okay, so...
Yeah, you had a conflict, alright. I prefer something on the 5th.
Do we want to just have one, I'm being bold here, but it's right before budget. In the following month, you have your own meetings at your own times. So do we want to just do it on, do it on that, on the 11th and just have one meeting with everybody?
November 11th? It's Veterans Day.
Oh, correct. That is correct.
The 11th or 12th.
So you want to make that, like that one a Monday, November 10th?
I'm fine with that.
We just have one, one meeting for everybody on November 10th?
So do we have to have both the elementaries that week?
Yeah, but we'll, we can keep it small because you're going to have your meetings in December anyway that you're on, you're on. So any big topic, we can move to December as well.
As long as we start with Berlin at 6, that's it.
Right.
We can do the Boylston at 6:30.
Okay, so we'll do all of these on Monday, the 10th. And Berlin at 6. Boylston at 6:30.
Do the tri at 6:30?
We'll do Boil, we'll do Berlin at, Berlin at 6, Boylston at 6:30? Oh, I see what you're saying.
Actually, if you want to have the Boylston meeting at the London, it's not too...
Yeah, that probably makes sense.
Yeah, that's perfect. It's a good idea.
So we'll do...
You're full of good ideas right now.
Berlin at 6, the region at 6:30, the tri at 7, and Boylston at 7:30. Okay, and then you're saying that this December 2nd has to start at 6:30?
Anything that starts with the 6?
Yep. Okay, and then, anything after that? January or February?
Not the 12th.
Okay. Guys, I'm just going to tell you, be nice to me on January 6th.
Bring your cupcakes.
Put that down. Be nice to me 8, 9. No, you guys are always nice to me. I'm just kidding.
I know, I was just asking.
So this is, she's got her meeting.
Someone's also, I asked, prior to the schedule, we're not really meeting either from the elementaries prior to the start of school.
Correct.
Is, is, is there expected to be a need for that?
Nope, but if there is, I know we already have until August 19th. I can bump one of them up there if I needed to.
And I'm not proposing that we need to, I'm just asking.
Okay, it's smart.
Okay, so I'll have Cheryl make the changes of what you've discussed, and then we can put it forward. Alright. Next is the discussion on the MASC school governance tune-up. I think you all received Dorothy Presser's information, and then...
Can I back up a second?
Oh.
Sorry.
Sure. We said Janet Pierce coming.
That's a bummer.
That's a big one.
What was it?
Are you going to be away?
Yeah. No, the battery.
Hey, you can Skype.
Yeah, you can, Boylston.
Yeah, but I'm five hours ahead.
Well, you can Skype in for the region.
We don't enroll it again?
I can enroll all the time.
Yeah, I kind of need to know if we're really having, because I'm considering coming back for vacation.
For which day? For which day?
August 19th.
Yeah. I will drop my kid off at college.
Did somebody else have issues with August 19th? She's coming back for vacation for it.
I am, I'm coming back from Haiti that Saturday, and I will be, I'll be here.
I, I think we can be back, because I think that the tryouts for the sports teams here will start like Wednesday or Thursday of that week, typically. Which we'll want to be back for that, so I just wanted to make sure enough committee members could be, are going to be here on August 19th.
Oh, get a big cup, maybe the following week, or if the school starts early, it'll be part of it.
I don't know about her availability, but yes, school starts, teachers come back the 25th and 26th is the big district day. And then the 27th is when students come back.
And as, as much as I would like to be here for that, of course, that's pretty important, the whole region thing. But if I'm the only one, and she's not available any other time, it is what it is.
I mean, now Brad is the, the chairperson, but if you want to reach out to her and see if she can do the 26th?
Sure, let's, let's communicate by email later and we'll connect with Janet.
Yep.
What day? Does everyone else can do the 26th, right?
Everybody else can do Tuesday, the 26th?
Because the school starts the 27th?
Students are the 27th, teachers are here the 25th and 26th. New teacher orientation is Friday, the 22nd. Okay.
So we're moving, are we moving the 19th to the 26th?
Not yet. We're going to communicate with Janet, and that's the only reason why we're really having meetings for Janet. That's really the ultimate.
That's a big topic.
Yeah.
Now, and if you have to, meeting with the business person can just be, like are all of us going to have to gather Sunday in July to just...
Okay. Alright, can you also? That's okay. You received also the copy of the email that Dorothy Presser sent to me in regards to some of her dates and availabilities. If you wanted to, I know we talked about having her come back in, make sure we're staying on task, staying in tune, in alignment. So there were some dates that she stays for availability. I don't know if you, Ruth, I know you had asked if this could be on the agenda, so I don't know if you had more information? Have you spoken to Dorothy, or? I mean, I did speak to her. It's basically a follow-up. You know, we could have had you, well, we did. Um, so did you do much, I mean, did you speak to the government? You did all, all of it?
Not all of it.
You came in and moved.
Yeah, the majority of it.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I think it's just a measure to see where we're at for staying on task. Because we don't have to have it. I think it's a good idea.
I noticed something. They're doing a couple workshops on school boards, role in student achievement. They had one last month, and then they have that in the Cape, and they're having one in September out in Lenox. And I, I don't know if Dorothy Presser could bring that little workshop to us, but I thought that would be really interesting. And I, I am planning to go to the conference in November, and it looked like they didn't have that topic listed. But going, it was just for my own.
What is the conference date?
I don't think I'm really...
The conference date?
In November.
6/70, something like that.
We have that on the agenda for the next meeting too, to see if anyone wants to go.
Yeah, I really want to go to next week.
Sorry, just that I need that.
Maybe miss it, actually. Because it'd be like 6/70.
You looked like you were going to say something.
No, I think it's a good idea to have.
Yeah.
Just trying to schedule it.
Right. So if we look at those dates that she offered, clearly the 19th is out. I'm gone the 12th and 13th of August. The 26th is when you said you wanted Janet Pierce here. You could do both that same night, but that would be, usually she does a two-hour conference. If your only topic's going to be Janet Pierce, then, you know, that might be a half an hour, and then you could do two hours afterwards. I don't know how long your discussion will be with Janet.
In the email, those are the days she's not available.
Oh, yeah.
Just saying.
Awesome. Good, because we're not either.
Because you're gone, he's gone, so...
Great. Thank you for meeting that. We just set our goals, and I'm sure we could change them if we needed to. Yeah, good catch, Brad. We go home soon. Yeah, because it would be something we don't do.
But looking at the agenda, don't we have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
And I was just looking at that agenda. And it's a couple policies, but then it's, you know, it's looking at our norms and standards and looking at our school committee goals. On our own, right?
Right.
So I'm, I don't know.
Because I know...
Wondering whether our tune-up would cover.
Your tune-up actually would, I think, follow up more like next steps. Like, so that's what you've done, but then what? I mean, you guys have made a lot of, maybe it is on that student achievement, maybe it is on, you know, I mean, you can get ideas from, I can get ideas from Dorothy of what some of those are, and I could always email them out to all of you. And you can give me your feedback that I could send back to Dorothy if you wanted, you know, individually. But she also, when she gave this on tune-up, these are some of the, the things that they're talking about here as well, on their focal points. So, operating protocols, your goals you're doing on your own, you know. We do the self eval. I mean, we did say that, you guys did say you wanted to do that every year.
I think there's some other topics that are in the minutes.
Oh, to do it? That was broken. That's broken.
That was broken.
We need to decide if we can do it for the region again.
Maybe do some additional topics from the minutes of our last workshop.
Right, maybe you could look at those, Laurie. Laurie could look at the minutes from your last workshop. I still think even communication, we all, that's kind of a goal that we've all had for each other.
And we had something about doing something collaboratively with parents, which was alluded to tonight, the PTO as well.
So maybe that's something, that could be a focus, is some different communication dynamics. You all want to communicate more. When I went, and I'm not at the PTO with Link, as well as in Boylston, I expressed that, that the school committee would like to have PTO members attend school committee meetings to give some information, because they can't have these open public forums like this. But we, they would like to hear what's happening from the PTO perspective. So they were very, you know, open to that old PTO, so... Well, I think it's going to take you longer than you think to go over those things next week. I, I need to know next week where the direction's actually going, where you want those changes. I gave some recommendations in my evaluation. I need to know if you're comfortable with that, if you're not. Because in July is when I'm working with the administrative team during our emin retreat.
Yep.
To talk about our goals and our strategic plan.
06, next week?
Yep.
We'll see what I'm trying to do.
Are we picking a date? Are we not, are we deciding to do it or not? You guys are looking at what dates would be available?
Is anybody around in July? I'm just thinking, maybe July, we might be a little bit lucky combined with meeting. I'm just thinking, maybe July, we might be able to be lucky and have a meeting.
So, Tom, you're not here the first two weeks, right?
That's correct.
And then that July 15th through 18th week is the MAS S executive conference. The week of the 14th. I mean, I'm, I'm available on Monday, the 14th. Probably not till seven. Does that work?
I don't know. But I'm not going to know yet.
Okay.
Works for me?
Works for you? Does that work for everybody? Monday, the 14th at seven o'clock. That's the earliest I'll be able to get here.
It's a Monday.
That's the workshop, right?
Yep. Do you want to pick a second date in case, in case she can't do that?
So what about the next week? For people away the next week? July, that we did the 21st?
Plan Monday each week, see much as well.
Plan Monday, is that what you said?
Oh, no, I mean, I'm here, I understand that. Usually one amount of time, amount of time for the week, so.
Okay. So we'll try the 14th, or we'll try the 21st, and see if those two dates work? Does that work?
Sounds pretty good.
And again, the earliest I'd be able to get here is seven o'clock. All righty. All right. Now we have any school committee comments or future agenda items?
Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Let's see your comments. Second.
All those are big?
Aye.
Do we have to adjourn?
No.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn, Rowan?
Aye. Aye.
Second, sure.
Hamilton, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Subdue.
We should do it.
Say second.
Aye.
He's not paying attention.
Yes, he is.
August.